Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. which stands by law.
I'm not in this law.
I'll give you that.
This is to advise those present at this meeting of the Board of Education of the Pinelands Regional School District and the County of Ocean that adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. The notice has been posted in the Board of Education office, junior high and high school buildings. The notice was also mailed to the Press of Atlantic City, Asbury Park Press, and filed with the Municipal Clerks of Bass River, Eagleswood, and Little Lake Harbor Township and the Borough of Tuckernan. Amanda, can we do another roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Bartlett?
Here.
Ms. Betty?
Here.
Mr. Bonnicky?
Here.
Mr. Dalio?
Here.
Ms. Fagan? She will be marked absent. Ms. Martin? She will be marked absent. Ms. Zimmerman?
Here.
Ms. Hanidell?
Here.
Mrs. McBeig?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Thank you, we're in session.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to item number five, approval of the minutes. We need a motion to approve the following minutes. Regular session, September 25th. Regular session, October 12th. Executive session, September 25th. And executive session, October 12th. Motion.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none?
Right, Mr. Bartlett, you were absent on the 12th, so.
So I've seen on the 12th that I, yes, on the rest.
Okay. Ms. Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnicky?
Yes.
Mr. Dalio?
Yes.
Mrs. Zimmerman?
I abstained from the 12th and I approved the 25th.
Ms. Hanidell?
I abstained from the 12th, uh, 25th, sorry, and, uh, yes, to the 12th.
Okay, and Mrs. McBeig?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the report of the superintendent, I give you Dr. McCollie.
Thank you, I am going to turn it over to Johannes Smith, AKA Homecoming Queens. I would like her to go first. Now that I embarrassed her.
Yes. Hi, good evening. October has been very busy this school year so far. The past few weeks, students have signed up for dual enrollment and early college opportunities at Stockton as well as OCC. The class of 2024 hosted, as you know, homecoming, as well as a football game and where the dance, I'm sorry, excuse me, and the dance, and the football team took home a win and generated school spirit. The marine science class went on a field trip to Beach Haven to further their education about marine wildlife. Many students helped chaperone the Pinelands experience learning fundamental leadership skills and participating in the community. Student ambassadors partnered with the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy to educate our ambassadors about leadership. Wildcats in Action hosted a lunchtime raffle for Golden Green Pride Card students. The winner then received a refund on their homecoming ticket. And lastly, just a reminder, the extended learning program is still offering free SAT prep classes after school on Mondays. The monthly calendar is posted on our school website. That is all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, I just have a couple more things. Um, Mr. Hand and I got to do a presentation today down at school boards and we had a great audience full of board members, administrators, people from all over New Jersey. And we got to showcase and highlight some of the great programs that we're having here in terms of mental health. Lot of questions, a lot of support, a lot of great feedback from the audience. And once again, I just want to thank the board for all of your support, allowing us to have these programs for students, staff, and for parents. It's really been very helpful to all of us, so thank you. And I did send some photos out to the board. We do have Q-SAT coming up, we're in that planning process. At this point, we're going to have the self-assessment due, that's where we go through the indicators and we score ourselves. However, that is just the initial phase. When the team comes from the county, there's different representatives that come and they scrutinize and analyze every single one of those indicators. So we have to have the backup to support the score that we give ourselves. So we are in the process of doing that and we believe the formal evaluation will take place in the spring. I just want to thank Mel Reed and his team for meeting with the Board Negotiating Committee and myself. We look forward to those meetings and having a productive time together. And lastly, Mr. and Mrs. Cross are here this evening and they're on our agenda. They're going to be volunteering to help our students in the greenhouse and with some, um, different gardening and plants and things of which I have no knowledge of how to do. So we appreciate you helping out with our students.
Well, before.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, moving along to presentations.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Dr. McCollie, President McVeigh, Vice President Hanidell, and members of the board. Um, the administrative team is pleased to present our data from mostly 2023. We do have some current data in there as well. So we are going to get started. I'd like to start with our mission statement. Our mission statement is to create a positive culture and space to encourage lifelong personalized learning opportunities for students, staff, families, and community members. So this is our current data from October 15th. Um, it is always changing on a daily basis, actually some of these numbers have changed, uh, but we wanted to take a snapshot. So currently, we have 503 students in the junior high, 1,078 in the high school, 1,581 students in all. Um, you can see our economically disadvantaged students in the junior high is 52% and 47% in the high school. I believe our highest ever, uh, for economically disadvantaged students. Um, students with disabilities in the junior high, 22% and 23% in the high school. And our English language learners, which actually now they are called MLL, multi-language learners. And we have 18 students and nine homeless. Um, I thought this was an interesting slide, uh, we've been kind of keeping track of the Pinelands demographics for years and looking longitudinally, uh, very interesting. If you look at the peach-colored column in 2016-17, um, 87% of our students were white. And then we had multiple diverse populations, but only about 11 or 12% of diversity at that time. If you go all, all the way over to the right in the pink column, now in the year 23-24, um, this is current data. 80% white and 20% diverse. So our population is changing and, um, something that we are paying attention to and making sure that we are culturally responsive to that population. Uh, we are proud, I know you've seen this before, but I just wanted to, to publicly announce that we were chosen as one of the best high schools across the nation, um, through a rigorous criteria that I'll be sharing with you. Our high school was ranked number four in the county using these specific criteria that U.S. News and World Report, um, guides with this, um, practice. Uh, we are number four, you can see, um, Mates is number one, Pleasant Beach and Borough are ahead of us. And as you know, again, looking at our demographics, uh, we do have many challenges and we are still keeping, um, with the leading, um, schools in our county.
Mates really jumped up.
Yes. This is actually how they, what methodology is used with U.S. News and World Report, um, how they actually come up with those rankings. And a lot of this is focused on advanced placement and how many of our students are taking advanced placement courses and doing well in those courses. So if you look at the top little, um, square, it says college readiness and that's 30%. And college curriculum breadth is 10%. So giving a, an array of AP courses and also having many of our, um, senior class students take those AP classes. So that is how it is derived. I thought this was also an interesting slide here. Um, this is Pinelands out of 400 schools in, um, this state. You can see that we are actually number 161, um, for college readiness and 122 for college curriculum breadth. So we are really leading there. Um, some numbers from last year, um, someone asked this question, so we thought we would actually, um, share this data with everyone. Our dual enrollment, and this is last year, and I know we presented about this, is 85 students taking dual enrollment Stockton courses. That was last year. We don't have the numbers from this year because they're still signing up for Stockton courses right now. And I don't believe the deadline is until November or December. So we have a little bit of time for that, so I don't have current data on Stockton dual enrollment. Here's our dual enrollment for Ocean County College, uh, from last year. We had 145 students taking Ocean County courses last year and this year 154 students. That deadline has already passed, so that number is firm. Um, our academies, we have 40 students in the Humanities Law Academy and 34 in the Biomed. That, those are numbers from last year. And last year, we had 53 JAG students. And for the Ocean County Vocational Technical Students, we have, this is from last year again, 74 shared-time students and 14 full-time. And for ROTC, our new program, eight students, we're very excited. We have multiple freshmen in that program, so, uh, we're hoping that that helps the program grow in the future. Okay, I wanted to also kind of bring this up because since we are number four in the county and AP, um, is one of the indicators. And I will just want to give a shout out to Ms. Porter, I know she's in the audience tonight. She and I actually were asked to do a presentation for, um, the Ocean County Leaders. Uh, we had an Ocean County Advanced Placement colloquium. And in that, those days, there were multiple days that we had different, um, presentations and we were asked to present to school leaders. And in that presentation, we used some of this data and we talked a little bit about how we've grown our program over the years. For AP and making it more accessible and equitable for our students. And that's been really something that's, that's helped our students prepare for life after high school. And this was a slide we also presented that day, and if you look at two thousand eight, we only had forty eight AP students. So you can see how we've grown and now we are. One hundred seventy six, we're taking three hundred sixty one exams. So, um, exponentially have grown over those years. Here is our spring twenty twenty three NJSLA data for ELA. Um, we like to compare ourselves to the B factor, uh, which means that, um, these are like schools. Schools that are like us in composition when it comes to economically disadvantaged, um, students with disabilities and such. So, in our factor group seventh grade, we had thirty one percent pass. The state is at fifty six and B factor is at forty two. For eighth grade, it was forty four percent as in comparison to forty seven percent and fifty six percent for the state. For our ninth grade ELA, and we did have, um, it was a tough year for, for ninth grade last year. So we are looking closer into that number, but thirty three percent as opposed to thirty seven percent for the B factor group. And we are not that far off with B factor group for, uh, Pinelands and all of our ELA. Now, as you know, we are working really hard in the math department to, um, really close the gap there. Um, a lot of, um, missing foundational skills and we're really working through that. We, um, I actually attended the Little Lake Harbor meeting and their scores are doing, uh, really well, uh, down there. So we hope they keep that up because they're coming up a lot more prepared in seventh grade, so that's really promising. And so if you look at our seventh grade, we are right in line with our B factor group there with twenty two percent. Eighth grade, uh, these are students who do not go into Algebra One in eighth grade. So they, um, are a focus area for us because we are paying attention to their deficiencies. And making sure we're making up for those foundational skills. In our middle school algebra, it's forty one percent of our students passed. Algebra One, and again, we're looking at this area, and if you look at the state, you can see Algebra One is an area that we all need to focus on. And geometry, we did not have B factor comparison for that, but fifteen percent of our students. So we are working very hard, hop- hoping that, uh, we show a lot of growth next year in math. We did realign our curriculum this summer. And here are our state, uh, spring. Um, science scores and as, um, comparison to the DFGV group. We are a little bit above in eighth grade, you only take that test in fifth, eighth and eleventh grade. And our eleventh grade scores are eighteen percent as opposed to the, uh, B factor group of thirteen. Okay. I'm gonna bring up Mr. Henderson at this time.
Thank you, uh, before I get into our goals, I just wanna say, you know, being fourth in the county, um, it's because of amazing teachers like Ms. Porter. I had the, yep, you're getting this, so I had the pleasure of, um, observing her last week and she's an absolute rock star. Our, our students are lucky to have her and the commitment, tonight is her birthday and here she is, so happy birthday. She's gonna hit me tomorrow. So, uh, the two goals that we're focused on this year at the high school, one is differentiation. We really want our teachers to start focusing on differentiating, uh, for the multiple, um, different learning styles and ability levels in our classrooms. So we're gonna focus on that, along with the district, um, goal, which is mentorship. Um, I actually had the pleasure of mentoring a student, uh, myself, a ninth grader coming up. And, um, it's gonna be a challenge, but it's gonna be one that I think a lot of our population needs, whether it's academic, social, emotional. Um, or, you know, discipline behavior issues, I think mentoring, it's gonna be a, a really good thing this year, so that's high school. Good evening, everyone, uh, much like the high school and along with our district goals, uh, at the junior high school, we are also foc- focusing on differentiation. Differentiation, excuse me, uh, I don't know many of you know, uh, over the summer. Uh, we had a tremendous amount of technology that's come in, I would say a greater part, ninety percent of our classrooms have the brand new. IFP board, so they're interactive, allows the teachers to do a lot more, it's basically like a computer on a cart. So they can access YouTube, their Google Drive and it's, you know, seemingly through, seem seamlessly through the lesson. Um, we also just recently purchased, um, a, a great number, I wanna say close to thirty, forty of these mobile desks. Um, as we discussed in our leadership group, we brought it to our teachers, they were on board with it, if we're gonna focus on differentiation, we gave them basically. Um, purchased these mobile desks for them to be, to able to be, be able to move around the classroom so they're not stuck at their desk. Um, our second goal, uh, we're gonna continue on student engagement and communication, really hon- honing in in our, on our ROR program, parent contact, et cetera. So those are the goals for the junior high school and as the year goes on, I'm sure we'll keep you up to date how we progress on those, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shore, Mr. Henderson, now we have Ms. Kenny.
Good evening, everyone, um, I'm speaking on behalf of my esteemed colleague, Mrs. Janelle Gonzalez. She was unable to attend tonight, so I said I would gladly present SBYS because it's an outstanding program. That has been really the cornerstone of Pinelands Regional School District. Um, there's a lot of information on that slide, but in the bottom right and the, it's written in black, it talks about the unduplicated. Impact that they have on our building. I can't read that far, I might, I should have had my glasses on, but I think it says, does it say forty two percent for the junior high, I have to look on that slide. Forty three percent, that means that they've serviced forty three percent of the junior high school population, unduplicated. So that's incredible, the high school, I think this is twenty three, but. Thank you, could see I might need new contacts, I'm aging, thirty five percent of the high school, so. You know, it's just an outstanding program, um, we continue to have a partnership with them. We're in, right now, we're working on Challenge Day and we'll be meeting to do a lot of things with that. Um, and you know, there's been a lot of talk in the government about would they continue funding it? And right now, we're just ecstatic that this program is very well supported and we thank all the school board members. That really were advocating for this program, it really meant a lot to all of us because we know what the impact that this has. Right, and now for Dr. McColey.
So how do we pay to be so wonderful? Well, uh, we have our local funds that Ms. Miller very carefully advocates for and we also have grants. And we will continue to write grants with the support of Dr. Clark and the administrative team to support all of our initiatives. We've seen these before, but just to reiterate briefly, the one at the top for one point three eight million dollars is a two-year grant. In which we will be providing mental health services to students as well as after-school and Saturday support. The DIF is the Disability Initiation Fund. This grant was actually something that was, um, given to us by the state, they reached out to Ms. Frasca. And what this will do is support students with disabilities transition into the workplace. We have the Clean Air Act, the School Climate Act, and then another mental health grant that Dr. Clark wrote with Ms. Gonzalez. To support a lot of mental health initiatives in our school district. So, some of the other initiatives, and they were mentioned, but I will briefly go through them. The mentoring program is going to be up and running very shortly. We've now paired high school students with mentors and I'm in the process of pairing junior high students with mentors. Fortunately for us, we have more mentors that volunteered than we do students that need them right now. So as more students come available that do need the service, we have mentors waiting in the wings. We have mentors from all groups, secretaries, paraprofessionals, administrators and teachers. So it was just wonderful, everybody jumped on this initiative and they're supporting the school district with this program. The Twilight Program will be starting very shortly, that's going to be an after-school program from two fifteen to six fifteen. Four days a week after school for those students who either have school avoidance, need credit recovery. Or, um, they want that to be their program for some reason and not do the traditional route of school during the day. We also will have a Saturday option once a month. We're doing everything we can to make sure that students get their hours and credits and don't miss instruction. And then lastly, we've been working with Ruth, um, our literacy expert, on possibly becoming a magnet district for literacy. Because of all the people that we have here now that are certified in things like Orton-Gillingham or other methods of literacy instruction. We're going to try to become a magnet school district in which other schools can send students here for the programs that we have. Four, four days a week.
Thank you, that's all we have, any questions?
Can you talk a little more about the eight million bucks?
We are just in the beginning stages of that, so we, you actually approved that at the last board meeting on September twenty fifth. Okay, and, um, we were one of three schools picked in the state. Um, they felt that we had a need here at Pinelands and we were the South Jersey school that was chosen. And we're just in the beginning phases of that. There's a lot of money to come up with, um, a bank of resources so that our students, um, with disabilities. Can use that as they transition into the workforce and making connections with businesses. And different, um, opportunities for the kids. I believe it's multiple.
Thanks.
Yeah, so that's, that will be forthcoming, we'll keep you posted on that, all right, thank you.
It was like sixty two percent, but we can send you the presentation.
Hey Gina, I did have a question for you. No, as far as the, uh, economically disenfranchised, where do you, where's, where's the schools get those numbers from? That's, I was gonna assume that, but there could be more children out there or families that don't realize. So my next question would be, how does the state define disenfranchised? I mean, they gotta fall in, under what criteria?
So there is a, if the parents do fill out the form, it's basically goes by their income and the amount of student, people that live in the home. So if, there's a chart, so it's, it's based on income and how many people are dependents in the home. So if they meet the criteria, then they qualify for either free or reduced lunch. If they're homeless, they automatically apply and if they're like wards of the state, they automatically apply, it automatically get it.
Uh, the reason why I ask that, I just, maybe there's more families out there that don't realize they need the help.
So we've been really campaigning hard on this and as Ms. Frasca said, this is the highest number we've ever had because we feel that they are actually.
Okay.
So what we also had, Mr. John Jones, who's been amazing, he's been helping and what we're doing is. If they have lunch balances over fifty dollars, we're sending multiple notices home, text, email, phone call. Because we want them to fill the application out because it helps them and it helps us get more programs.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Cause it was like forty two percent, wasn't it, last year? And that's the big.
It's a big job.
And may I add, sorry.
Sure.
Um, it's also the fact that with the numbers of the people in the house, they also do take the highest pay depending on the month. Of the payment like that an adult or a guardian gets of, over that, like certain amount of time, so, like, some people don't. How to explain it, like they, um, like they took the highest pay, but they don't realize that, so then it minimizes. So then it's like with the school, they can have that personal discussion.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, we'll move on to our work session, your form. Are, were any members of the board who have questions or concerns they'd like to discuss at this moment? Mine can fall under old business probably, but we still have to fill out our board, um. Really evaluations, so just if you have it all, yourself about. So we have to start working on that. If you haven't opened it or checked it out, it's on the same place you did the, the superintendent's evaluation, so. I'm here to nag you, I'm sorry. Um, anything else? All right, moving on to new business, Mandy, do you want to discuss the formation of the Budget Committee or? Would you like me to bring that up?
Um, you can bring it up.
Budget Committee. It always seems like it's budget time, doesn't it?
Yes.
It's budget time for the twenty. Four.
Twenty five.
Twenty five year, um, when would we anticipate we would wanna have our first meeting?
We mid or late November, beginning of December.
Alright, so anyone who wishes to serve on that committee, if you would like, please let me know. Or let him know and we will. Uh, form that committee, speaking of committees, we also need board members to volunteer for the. Q-SAC evaluation that, um, Gina bought up that we are undergoing. And if there's a board member or two or three, four, who would like to be involved in that process. Um, please let myself or Kim know and you can, um, be involved in that. We anticipate those meetings will be during the day.
So that the Q-SAC one isn't as involved for the board, basically, you're gonna go and sit down with us and review all the information that we plan on presenting to the county. So once we compile all of that, which is the, you know, takes a lot of the time, then you can sit on that committee and we'll go over everything with you, any questions you might have. And we can meet when it's convenient for everyone, even if it was a, a Zoom.
So, mul those two things over and let either myself or Kim know what your desires are. And we'll, we'll put those, uh, committees together. Um, old business. Seeing none, we'll move on to residence forum for agenda items only. Board policy zero one six seven encourages community participation in every meeting. However, the board requests that the public respect the reasonable time limit when commenting on agenda items. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address the board on agenda items only? Seeing none, we will move on to item number ten, instructional. We need a motion to approve instructional items A through I. And we have a motion.
Motion.
Second. Any questions?
I have some questions. Can you second it?
Yes. No questions. Okay, so we have a couple things, one is the, all the way down, eight, five, five, zero. In the wording, it says now that why, it says that we actually can refuse to give. A child lunch soon, lunch after two times, but we never do that, right?
No, and the options were, um, to refuse the lunch and don't let them charge. And that's only for the students that are not considered free and reduced lunch. So number one, to even do that, we would have to know which students weren't free and reduced lunch and then, no, we would never, we would never deny them a lunch, so we.
And it's not just the same, but I mean.
No, that, you're not allowed, legally, you can't do that.
Good.
Yeah, so we are not.
So the wording is in there because you had to choose more wording?
Yeah, well, the, the USDA actually changed the regulation, so we had to change the policy, so it's the law. So we're changing our policy and abolishing the old one to align with the law.
But no one's gonna make them, I guess I'm just.
But you're getting rid of this policy, it's being abolished.
The abolished one, the abolished one, eight, five, five, zero, it doesn't need to be even be discussed because it's going away.
Okay.
You were saying the one, cause you mentioned two of them, one, five, five, zero, point, five, that one is the one, oh no, I'm sorry, the other, um, food service one.
Eight, five, zero, zero, yeah.
Eight, five, four, zero is getting abolished, eight, five, zero, zero is revised.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and then the other question was, um, and this is something you may not know off the top of your head, I don't know, Gina may know it, but. It's weird wording and I can't remember, honestly, I left my notes at home, but one said, if they qualify for federal. Put your phones off, off the desk, guys. If it's, if it's, it's very weird, but it says federal and then it says New Jersey law, if there's breakfast. But then it also says, well, if you have a breakfast, you still have, need to have a breakfast, you don't have to have two, right?
Say, say that again, Kim.
It, it's, that's what I'm saying, I'm not, I don't have it in front of me, but it says that the federal law says you, that if you have a certain number of. Free and reduced lunch, you have to have a breakfast. But then it goes on to say again, like if there's, if you don't, if you have a breakfast and a lunch, you still need another breakfast. It's very weird, unless they're talking about breakfast after the bell.
Um, I, I don't know, I could look into that for you, I know that there, the only thing I really have read about that type of regulation is you have to have a certain amount of time between breakfast and the first lunch.
Oh, is that.
So it could be that, yeah.
That's why I'm not sure, it didn't mention breakfast after the bell in this one. So all I'm wondering is.
We do have breakfast after the bell, but there has to be a certain amount of time when you've stopped serving breakfast and start serving in lunch.
So we just do it anyway.
Right, we have all that, there's ba- basically the cafeteria is open all day. It really is, it's, there's a very short window of time where it's not open.
Okay, and I think that was basically.
Okay, and I think that was basically, that's the jigsaw of the question, I guess. I think that's it for me. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes.
Ms. Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnicky?
Yes.
Mr. Dalio?
Yes.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hennadel?
Yes.
Ms. McDay?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eleven, personnel.
And there, I just want to mention there's a typo and this was our mistake. So under personnel A, the very first one, Rita Law. Number one, that should read November thirtieth, not November third. The zero was omitted.
Is that the same case for the next one?
No.
No.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Duly noted on the change on the agenda so that it's Rita Law, November thirtieth. We need a motion to approve items A through P.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes.
Ms. Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnicky?
Yes.
Mr. Dalio?
Yes.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Hennadel?
Yes.
Mrs. McDay?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number twelve, operations. We need a motion to approve the following operation items A through F.
Motion.
We need a second.
My little second.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes.
Ms. Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnicky?
Yes.
Mr. Dalio?
Yes.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes, but I will have seen from twelve F.
Ms. Hennadel?
Yes.
Mrs. McDay?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item number thirteen, the report of the board secretary and business administrator. We need a motion to approve the report of the board secretary, items A through J.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes.
Ms. Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnicky?
Yes.
Mr. Dalio?
Yes.
Ms. Spagan? I'm sorry. Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hennadel?
Yes.
Mrs. McDay?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no informational items at this time, so we'll move on to item fifteen, residence forum for general topics. Board policy zero one six seven encourages community participation in every meeting. However, the board requests that the public respect the reasonable time limit when commenting on any topic. Anyone from the audience wish to address the board on general topics?
Good evening, okay. Hi, good evening, Catherine Perner, both a resident and a very, very proud teacher of Pine Lands Regional High School. So even before I get started, what I want to say, first, I want to thank you. I have the new desk, I have a wall, and I have a whiteboard. I could not be happier. So I really want to thank you. It makes a huge difference up on the third floor. And not being able to hear the sneezes or anything next door is amazing. So really, but thank you for that. It is truly a game changer in my room and very appreciative of that. So my purpose to come here tonight is to first to tell you how very proud I am to be a teacher here at Pine Lands. And I've been here for over twenty years and I've been here at the very beginning and I've seen our school grow enormously where the focus is on education. And I had made this journey with Ms. Frasca and Ms. Kenny and some of my fellows in the back and with the teachers here. And when I came to realize that is at the presentation, I went with Ms. Frasca. So last week I went to two, one for Ocean County AP teachers of my subject, and then I gave a presentation, I was part of her presentation to education leaders. And in both presentations, schools are following our model. They were asking us how we are doing what we're doing. And it was just like, wow, I said it like, just taken back because we're, we are now in an educational leadership role. Which for many times we haven't been. And we all know, you know, it's Pine Lands, you know, you know, that school's better, this school's better, but no, we're better. And it was so, it 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 was just like, I was elated to hear that. And the very fact that part of the leadership has been through the advanced placement. Now, that comes not just from me, please, it comes from all of the teachers, whether they're, you know, starting off and doing the pre-AP classes or in the grade schools. It comes from the administrators who you could not do this without their support for an all-inclusion class. And of course, it comes from the board's support and from community. I'm from parents who are willing to get in the ditches with you and get a student across the board and and really help. And I just wanted to share this because it's not just coming from my opinion. For those of you who know me, you know I'm a firm believer that programs should be open to anybody, should have open access. And we as teachers, that's our job to encourage those students who don't think they can do it. Those students who don't want to do the homework, you know, that kind of stuff, and get them over the finish line. So again, I came away from the meeting extremely proud of our school. And I just wanted to share that with you and let you know that the chatter out there on the county level is that we're a great school. So why don't you share that with us?
Excuse me, birthday babe. Rick Miller up the same paper. I couldn't believe it when I saw last month that the meeting wasn't livestreamed, that it's not available on tape afterwards. If you want to be a transparent board of education in district, it really should be up there. Some people can't make the meeting. At six o'clock at night, some people are still feeding their family. I, for example, will not be able to make next month's meeting because I'm in a play. That's why I got my haircut. I'm no longer an Asian hippie. So, and the other thing is, is that I love it being on tape. Because at another school district, a board member accused me of writing a highly inaccurate article and didn't give me the chance to respond. Well, at the next meeting, I finally got the chance to respond. Everything in that article was a quote from board members or administrators at board meetings. People could look it up on the tape and see that every single one of my quotes was correct word for word. And a lot of the reason for that is, is when you have a tape of it, I can go back and get it word for word. Because I take my job very seriously. And one thing I hate is being told that I misquoted somebody. There was a meeting once in Stafford Township about twenty years ago. And a member stood up and went on for ten minutes about how I'd misquoted. Luckily, I had the tape recorder on from the last meeting. I went up to the microphone during the residence forum part and I played it. And he said, oh, but you took me out of context, so I played it longer. And he said, oh, well, that's what I said. But that's not what I meant. And I said, I can only quote what you said. Are you gonna give me an apology? Of course he wouldn't. At any rate, but that's what happens if you can't prove that what you said is correct. So I would really urge you to return to that system and if not, I'd like to understand the reasons why.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
President McDay, I'd just like to address the issue of the recording. As you can see, Mr. Miller right behind you, we are still recording the meetings. And just send me an email like you did last month and I'll send it to you. I sent you a copy. Yeah, I did absolutely. I sent it and then on the chart, I write down the date when I send it and the time. No problem.
Alrighty, moving on to board forum. I know we have, but I I do want to address the fact that Patty's not here. She is a an amazing board member and she does a great job. And she has missed this meeting and September's meeting because they were rescheduled and she couldn't get off and work. And she just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that her dedication and her desire to be here is still here, but that that was the reason why. So we will see her in November. Um, and with that, Mr. Bonnicky, anything for the greater good here?
I'm gonna try something.
You're gonna try something?
I'm gonna try something.
Alright.
I'm gonna try not to ramble. I'm gonna be as fast as I can because we're on the top of the day. Three, one, and and I want this to end. Um, but just, I think Kathy Corner, just simply, she left. Damn, damn. Is one of the examples of what I'm about to comment on. So on September twelfth, we had a emergency meeting. It was advertised, we had a caller call in, and I want to comment to the comment because this is public and the pub- the comment was public. Same old board. The caller had asked the questions, given an answer, and wasn't satisfied with the answer and said, same old board. And I beg to differ. But that's gonna piggyback another question. Jeff, why are you back? I've cleared that up with us, I think, but others may or may not. Uh, no, the answer or really care, and maybe they don't care, they don't have to care about me. They really don't. But when I walked away, I walked away from a contentious board, not admin and team. And the perception was that I walked away from the district. I grew up in the district. My kids graduated from the district. So when I answered the question, why are you back? Well, the faces changed from that contentious board. And it was, that's the truth. I don't want to deal with it anymore. But I felt that when the faces realigned and, you know, they had a, a different board, I'm gonna get back involved. That sets the whole example. The other piece about live streaming, I think, you know, we we've never done that until COVID came. Made it accessible to those who couldn't attend the meeting because of those restrictions. Now that they're relaxed. Well, thanks, Mr. Miller, but at six o'clock, I'm giving up and sacrificing my family as well to be here live. Raise your eyebrows, do what you want. We can have a conversation. But the comment for those who are sitting at home, and I'm gonna tell you, you're gonna sit behind that camera, you're gonna sit behind your computer, you're gonna go to your Facebook, you're gonna post crap about whatever is out there, just stop. Come to the meeting, get involved. Live participation, use this forum because those at home do not at that moment have the opportunity or do come up to that thought that's on their mind. Come here and use this forum to ask that question. This board will get you that answer. If it's not tonight, they will respond. And we will hold them to task to that. Understand what we are as your elected advocates of our district. We hold them to task. So I encourage, you know, the attendance to come here, get involved. There are no repercussions. Make up all the story you want. And if you have an issue and it's brought to the board, I've said this for the sixteen years, I'm eighteen now, you know, plus a little two years away, you know. You come in front of this board, you bring your concerns, you get your answers. And if there's an absolute specific it's situation or issue that came up, bring it up. Don't, don't, don't sit there and think, wow, this happened and that happened, or turn it into your own little twist. Because that's what, that's what happens. That's the truth back there in Facebook world and social media world. I'm sick and tired of that. And I just, again, and when that comment came up, said enough, it's not the same old board. It's a great board. It's a great district. Look at what we've done. I've been here since the school opened, broke ground in seventy nine, eighty. I've been in this district my whole life. Seen it all happen, all the great stuff, all the bad stuff. What is the bad stuff? What is the bad stuff? What is not the trouble? The 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 little hurdle, the stumbling block from construction to uh, teachers and growth and contracts and all the things that go into running a district. It's a great place, man. Alright, come to the meetings, please.
Thank you. Well said.
It has to be said. What's the Philly score? They have one.
Thank you um, for that lovely. It wasn't a ramble and I appreciate that you, that you took the opportunity to voice that concerns, which I'm sure a lot of us are feeling the same way that you are. So I appreciate that. Um, I have nothing in addition to add besides. Kudos, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Bartlett?
Happy Fall. Homecoming was great. Uh, just a good vibe in the, in the stadium. Got to see a lot of that. So it was, thanks for sharing that in your report. Uh, but yeah, just, it was, I don't know how many stands were full, back everywhere, so nothing else to add.
A lot of fun.
That's great, Mr. I'm sorry. Um, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Cross and Ms. Perner and Gina and the team. And um, I don't really have anything else. I have a, I had a legislative meeting for the state, but I was sick. So I will get you the paperwork when I get it and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Even though I didn't call on you.
I wanted to say thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Cross, and I didn't know Mrs. Cross was involved. Now that I know there's a strong woman, I have very high hopes for the. This is exciting. Um, congratulations to football team, congratulations to our homecoming queen. The the numbers, that um, every, every school in, in the country is having um, what Gina called learning deficiencies because of COVID. Um, I watched my own son standing in the kitchen while his teacher was talking, making mashed potatoes during COVID because they didn't really learn. And we're having to fight that back from that. But having said that, both of my sons got um, AP scores that they were able to take to college from Pine Lands. So um, the the program and and what Mrs. Perner was so excited about was that we are leaders. Is is saying so amazing because, you know, the the reputation is always the thing. Um. I keep saying how um, how good we're doing here. And and again, I have a lot of, I see a lot of other places because of where I live, where I work, everything like that. And we are killing it. We really are. And I know nothing's perfect. Everybody's got things. Um, maybe not, maybe, and you are right. People should show up. People should be a part of this, but.
I've always said that, no matter what's happened.
Been right.
From faculty to public.
So, so yes, yes. The community can get involved if they choose and be part of something that might, that is becoming amazing. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dalio?
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, one thing to say is that I'm in a hundred percent support of Mr. Bonnicky stated. I mean, everything to a T. The only thing that would add to that is, you know, um, I think to be able to use YouTube to be able to showcase all the great and positive things that do happen here, that there is, that is one avenue or venue where the public.
That there is, that is one avenue or venue where the public can see if they choose. And I'd hate to see some people that use it just for, to do, uh, to get on a soapbox and complain. Uh, ruin it for all the other people that could use it to get information directly from the board. So maybe at one point we could put it, um, it's a recorded, so we can maybe put it out there the next day. So people can at least have, can go to it and go back to it and see it. And that's, that's, that's my feeling on it, you know, we had it out there and I hate to see a few, you know, ruin it for the rest of the people that really can get something out of it. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm, I from I'm glad Jeff is back. He's such a great voice on this board and um, we're lucky to have him back. Um, and to piggyback on that, it's, it's a decision we made so that if you want the information, you can either come to the meeting, listen to what's going on, ask questions, or you can request to see the, the video of the meeting. What we're trying to prevent from happening is people who watch the live stream and before it's even over are disseminating misinformation via social media. And um, it's, it's a lot of work that goes into this school district. And um, whether it's a teacher or a coach or board member or administrator, um, their hard work should not be damaged by someone's agenda on social media. So this is our attempt to be in control of the information and make sure that the accurate information is getting out there. And we're not the only school district who has come to this conclusion that this is the best way to handle this. Um, you know, it's, it's a rather new phenomenon, social media and, and, and trying to make sure we disseminate the information as best we can. And as in anything, um, some of the pitfalls show themselves and we're trying to prevent um, that from happening here. So it was a, a group decision to make and I think we all support that. Um, and if it's inconvenient, we're sorry for that, but there is the possibility of just requesting it, seeing the meeting and digesting that for yourself. Um, I'd also like to just give a shout out to all the fall sports teams. Um, some, some are very successful by record, some struggled a little bit. But um, having grandkids in the district that are involved in the sports programs. I, I would love to give a shout out to the coaches. Um, they're more than just teaching sports. They're mentoring young people and um, I think it is grown to be a thankless job. And I personally would like to thank each and every one of them who dedicate their time to our students. They do an amazing job and they deserve our respect and our appreciation. With that, a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh-oh.